You'll understand here in a minute. And do I have Laura Kemp and Martha Patterson?
Martha's here, I saw her.
Is Laura and Martha here with Missouri Workforce Development? That's you guys, alright, perfect, we're moving along, here we go. Ladies and gentlemen, I hereby call to order this meeting of the Sedalia City Council on the second day of September, part of the 2025-2026 session. The meeting is now called to order. The first item on our agenda is legislative prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor.
Would you please stand as able and join me in our invocation this evening? Dear Lord, Father of us all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the City Council of Sedalia. Mayor, mayor pro temps, staff, ward members, all meet to hear about, to question, discuss, and make decisions for the betterment of this community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and for their dedication to our city. We ask your protection of all of our first responders who work 24/7 to serve and protect us, often at their own peril. And we should now take time in this particular year to thank God for the United States of America, this constitutional republic, 250 years. We should consider those people with the foresight, our founders, and give thanks to this great country as we celebrate this whole coming year. We ask your blessing and protection for all of those military and civilians serving this great country today, here and throughout the world, and we ask that they be brought home safely to their families. Tonight especially too, there's a special awards being given, keys to this city of Sedalia to Darcy Curtis and Jada McMillan. They have done wonderful service to this city and are so deserving of a great honor. And now as we leave tonight, please protect us and our loved ones, keep us from harm until we meet again, in all this we pray in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
... to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Robinson.
Yes.
Ames.
Yes.
Scribner.
Here.
Bogus.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is a proclamation. The city of Sedalia is proud to recognize an important initiative that impacts our community, our employers, and our local economy. Each year, the month of September is recognized as Workforce Development Month, a time to honor the dedicated professionals and organizations who work every day to help individuals develop skills, meaningful employment, and support our businesses in building a strong and competitive workforce. Tonight, we are joined by two outstanding representatives from the Missouri Job Center, Laura Kemp and Martha Patterson, who play a vital role in these efforts. Martha and Laura, if you'd like to step forward. At this time, I'd like to formally present the proclamation and read it into the record. Whereas the economic development of every region in our country and the ability of our businesses and industries to compete in the global economy are more than ever dependent on the availability and quality of a skilled workforce and robust talent pipeline, and whereas the complexity and fast-paced change in our economy and labor markets puts new demands on the individuals and employers at all levels, and whereas employers depend on similar levels of professional services to help them recruit and retain a competitive workforce and continually upgrade skill sets of their incumbent employees. Now therefore be it resolved that I Andrew Dawson, Mayor of the City of Sedalia, joins with the National Association of Workforce Development Professionals in designating the month of September as Workforce Development Month in honor of all those individuals and the workforce development organizations and partnerships who play such a vital role in our economy. Lauren, Martha, on behalf of the City of Sedalia, we want to thank you for your vital work that you do in supporting job seekers and workforce development in our region. Alright, our next item is under Special Awards, and we have a key ceremony. First of all, I want to thank everyone here for attending tonight. It's an honor to welcome you to this special moment as we recognize an extraordinary act of courage and compassion that took place right here in our community. As many as you have read or heard, an accident, a terrifying accident occurred on July 9th. A young woman, Cheyenne Bedwell, was driving along Route Y when another driver, in a reckless and dangerous act, forced her car off the road. The impact sent her vehicle airborne. She crashed nose-first into a ditch and was left trapped in her car, which eventually caught fire. This very well could have ended in tragedy, but two incredible women who happened to be driving home from White Men Air Force Base saw what happened. They stopped without hesitation, and in a moment where seconds mattered, they risked their own safety to pull Cheyenne from the burning vehicle, saving her life. Tonight, we are here to honor these two women, Senior Airman Jada McMillan and Ms. Darcy Curtis, for their bravery, selflessness, and fast action. If you guys would like to go ahead and step forward. I've got a few more words to say. The key of the city is one of the highest honors a municipality can bestow. It traces its roots back to medieval times, when walled cities had gates and it could be locked. Presenting a key was a sign of trust, symbolizing that the recipient was always welcome and held in highest regard. Though the plaque we are presenting tonight does not have any, open any physical doors, it represents an open invitation into the heart of its city and the deep gratitude of its people. Today, the tradition lives on in a ceremonial way to recognize extraordinary acts, remarkable service, and significant contributors to the community. This evening, the city of Sedalia is proud to present this honor to two remarkable women. At this time, I would like to invite someone who knows the weight of those moments more than anyone, Melissa Johnson, the mother of Cheyenne Bedwell, forward to share a few words on behalf of the family.
She always came out of those with nothing more than being irate at the deer, and they were having insurance costs. But when my phone went off that night, that was just about the worst hair that I think I could have ever experienced in my life. I had set her phone up when she first got in at the age of 14, that I was her emergency contact, and so her phone literally called me and then plugged to like 360. That sent a text message to everybody and let us know where she was at. I called her and it rang and it rang and it never answered, and then the next time I called back, it didn't even ring. And that's when I knew it was bad. Because if it had been a deer, she would have called me immediately. I did everything, I called my husband, I said, "The kids are yours, I'm leaving." I got my shoes, drove 20 miles with barefoot, don't tell the cops. I called Dispatch in Johnson County, like, "Have you had a wreck? Where's my kid at?" No one could really tell me anything other than, "Yes, they do, there was a wreck and I hit the road." And I was maybe five miles out of town when I got an unknown caller, and I almost ignored it because we all do that, right? Because we don't want to deal with people we don't know. But that moment, I went from crap, somebody's bothering me, to take that call. When I did, the first thing I heard in the background was, one, my kid saying, "Mom." And then I think it was later, she started talking and telling me in a way that not a lot of people understand, I'm a trauma nurse, I'm supposed to be big and toughed. I deal with this stuff. I call people when it's their kids. When she started talking to me, I didn't know what they were, but she talked in my language, and she immediately put "mom" at rest because she was able to tell me what I call my language, that my kid truly was okay, not just she's okay, but the words, the phrases, and her calm, everything, let me know that my kid truly was okay. She's probably hurt, but she was okay. And that's when I knew I could get to where I need to go, safe, because I was a little crazy. I found out later that, as we all know, when somebody has a wreck, what do you do? What do you not do? You don't move them. Well, they weren't going to move her, until apparently the car decided they needed to burn them. At which point, they said, "We're moving her," and they did, they got her out of the car that was burning, and eventually literally burnt crisp, it was white and it's pretty much charcoal everywhere now. They got her out of there while it was on fire, took her to a place of safety, and if they hadn't done that, my worst fear would have come true. When I walked into that emergency room, two hours later, she was laying on the bed writhing in pain, and all I could say was, "I'm so sorry you're hurt, but I'm so glad that you're hurt." Because, because you hurt tells me that you're gonna be okay. And if it hadn't been for two girls, yes, good girls, if it hadn't been for two girls that were strong and didn't put their own personal comfort up front, my daughter could be dead, my daughter could be terribly maimed, and all of our lives would have been changed forever. They said, "I don't care." They got out of the car, they dealt with the fire, they dealt with the hot asphalt, they dealt with probably a scrum and bees. And they got her to safety and they put her safe, and I look back at the pictures that were sent to me later, the car completely engulfed in flames and a tower of smoke, probably several stories tall, and the only person there was one cop. There wasn't a fire truck, there wasn't an ambulance. We think I would have told them about that at that point. If they had done something, it would have been a completely different day that day. The only words of thank you, but they're not enough. You have kids, and you may have some day. But until that moment comes, with it shorting, that's a totally different panic, and I'm grateful that you put your own shoes aside and your own hair根 aside, their nails, and said, "I'm gonna take care of this human. I don't know who she is, I've never met her before, but I'll take care of this human, and if I get hurt in the meantime, I'm gonna take care of another human," and I'm so grateful. So we tried to get Shani to come tonight, she's still pretty, we still have nightmares every night of what happened. So, Darcy told me she had experienced some of the sitting room when she was a teenager, grateful for her change, and as the mom on the knee says, "Get your butt up here and do the right thing." But the nurse on the knee says, "I kinda get it, PTSD is real," and I look over and look at it either, but on the Shani's behalf, my family's behalf, one brother, three sisters, and about 10 cousins, sick. Mom, dad, and aunt, uncle, and auntie, and auntie, and thank you for putting your own life down for a little office same way, so they never met, apparently never seen. Thank you, I appreciate it, and I love the way it's not on the kid.
Now we come to the formal presentation. Ms. Darcy Curtis and Senior Airman Jada McMillan, your actions were nothing short of heroic. You didn't wait, you didn't hesitate, you acted, and because of that, a young woman is alive today. On behalf of the City of Sedalia, we are proud to present each of you with a key to the Thank you both again, to both of you, for showing us what it means to truly serve, not just in uniform, but as a human being caring for others. Your bravery reminds us all that ordinary people can do extraordinary things, and that heroes walk amongst us every day. To both of you, our city is forever grateful. With that, what we're gonna go ahead and do is, is take a brief 10-minute recess to allow for photos, personal thanks, and a moment to recognize our honorees more informally. Council will reconvene at 6:57. Alright, next item on our agenda is approval of the previous session meeting minutes. These are the council meeting minutes dated August 18th, 2025. Do I have a motion in a second?
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding those meeting minutes? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now we have the roll call of our standing committees. Up first, we have Finance Administration. Chairwoman Bogus, you have the floor.
Thank you, we have two items for consideration through the Finance Administration Committee tonight. The first being a presentation for our fiscal year 2025, audit results from Williams Keepers presenters.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Schultz, I'm an audit partner at Williams Keepers in Columbia. We recently completed our audit of the city's fiscal year 2025 financial statements, so we certainly appreciate the opportunity to perform the audit, and I appreciate the opportunity to present the results of the audit to you all this evening. Consistent with prior years, I'm just gonna be presenting our summary report, which I believe this blue book was turned to the correct page for you all to follow along. This report just summarizes the highlights of the individual reports that we issued as a result of the audit, but you do have complete copies of all the audit reports in this book. Alright, the first report that we issued is the audited financial statements, so this report includes the city's annual financial statements for the fiscal year that ended March 31st, 2025, along with our report on those financial statements. In our report, which is titled "The Independent Auditor's Report," or referred to as "The Opinion Letter," we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the city's financial statements. That means that the users of your financial statements can rely upon them, both the statements and the notes that support the statements, because based on our audit procedures, they are reasonably stated in all material respects in accordance with the appropriate basis of accounting that the city follows. Management is ultimately responsible for these financial statements, it's our responsibility to apply audit procedures and give that opinion, but it is a common practice for us as independent auditors to also prepare the financial statements as part of the audit process. So we did that again this year, but because they are management's responsibility, they were reviewed and approved by management before they were issued last week. So we did that again this year, but because they are management's responsibility, they were reviewed and approved by management before they were issued last week. Just a reminder that anytime we perform a financial statement audit, regardless of how long we've been working with an entity, we do perform a risk assessment process during the planning stage of our audit to really help us identify areas where we need to apply audit procedures. And that's really on areas where the city's financial statements could be misstated. So that means we don't audit everything, but we do perform enough audit procedures in order to be able to give that clean or unmodified opinion on the financial statements. The financial statements themselves include two different sets of financial statements. That's one of many reasons why the report is so thick. The government-wide financial statements are the first statements you'll find in the packet. They're on pages eleven and twelve, and they are full accrual, meaning all long-term assets and liabilities are recorded. And it also includes all of the city's funds. So that's where you'll find everything that the city is required to account for and report. You'll find them in those government-wide statements, which are the first set on pages eleven and twelve. Following those statements are the fund financial statements, and that's where you'll find a lot more detail on the city's individual funds. So the city has governmental funds financial statements on pages thirteen through sixteen. Proprietary funds primarily for the utility. It also shows the balances and transactions for the hospital, which were audited separately and actually cover a different fiscal year. But those are on pages seventeen through twenty, those proprietary statements. And there are two fiduciary fund statements related to the pension trust fund. Those are on pages twenty-one through twenty-two. Moving on to the second page of the summary report, there is a table at the top that summarizes the highlights from those government-wide financial statements, where again, everything is put together for the city as seven for the year ended March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, with comparative information to two thousand and twenty-four. I do apologize if you're following along. You may notice in that second column where it says two thousand and twenty-three, that's incorrect. That should be two thousand and twenty-four. There is a management's discussion and analysis on pages four through ten in the audited financial statements. That discusses the changes in the various categories that are summarized here. That's the only part of the audited financial statements that's comparative, but it's written from management's perspective. So if you're going to read anything in these reports, I would read the M D N A. It talks about the financial highlights from the year, also some economic outlook items. So there's some good reading on those pages, again, pages four through ten. Something that's not noted in this summary report, but we also performed a single audit for the city this year. I don't believe one was required last year, but it seems like for the city, they're required every few years. And that just means that you all received and spent more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal grant funding. So it requires the single audit. So we performed additional procedures. There is a schedule of expenditures of federal awards on page eighty-one. In the audited financial statements, it details all of the individual federal grants that you received and spent. The city spent approximately three point five million dollars during fiscal year twenty-five, a federal grant funding. And the majority of that was the coronavirus state and local fiscal relief funds. So that was what we considered our major program this year due to the significance of those expenditures compared to the overall total. That's where we applied the majority of our procedures and did our detailed testing. So we did issue two additional reports required by that single audit. One is required by government auditing standards. And these reports are towards the back of the audited financial statements. They're not on the last few pages, but they're, I'd say, in the last ten to fifteen pages of that document. The Government Auditing Standards Report does include two findings that are significant deficiencies related to internal control of our financial reporting. And I'll talk about those just a little bit more when I get into the management letter. One of those is a continuing recommendation. One is new this year, but I'll go into a little more detail on that in a few minutes. The important thing for the single audit is for the Uniform Guidance Report, which is the second additional report required. We issued a clean or an unmodified opinion on compliance, so no compliance issues related to the federal grant expenditures. All right, we also issued an auditor's communication letter as a result of our audit, and it includes information that were required by our professional standards as the audity to communicate to those charged with governance. So for the city, this council serves that role. Just a few highlights, we didn't note any transactions that we considered both unusual and significant, so really no special or extraordinary items. But two new GAZB statements, essentially new accounting standards, were required to be implemented by the city during the year. The first one is Statement one hundred, which deals with accounting changes and error corrections. They really didn't have an impact on the city's financial statements. But the other one, GAZB one oh one, dealing with compensated absences, that one did have an impact on the city's financial statements. So prior to this standard, the city would have recorded a liability for compensated absences such as vacation, sick leave, numerous type of leave benefits that are offered to your employees if those hours essentially were earned and carried forward and could be paid out upon termination. Now, the new standard unfortunately increases the liability because it doesn't just look at what is expected to be paid out as far as those leave balances go upon employees' termination. It's now based on what is more likely than not to be used and therefore paid out during the length of an employee's employment with the city. So we worked with Jessica, went through a lot of calculations to come up with that liability. And that'll be something that'll need to be recalculated each year going forward. The good news for this current fiscal year, fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, there is a new accounting standard related to certain risk disclosures. It will not impact the city. Just a few more highlights, we did take a look at the assumptions that are included in the financial statements. We took a look at disclosures that are included to make sure everything was neutral, consistent, and clear. Everything required to be disclosed was disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. We did find the accounting records to be in good order, but consistent with prior years, we did as part of the audit assist with some of the accounting related to year-end accruals and some of those government-specific entries that need to be made just at year-end come audit time. We didn't have any disagreements with management. Want to thank Jessica and Jason and their teams for helping us facilitate another smooth audit this year. I think we're actually a month ahead of schedule compared to last year, so thank you all for your assistance. Last but not least is the management letter. So this will be the last report in your blue book. And this is used to really just communicate any findings or recommendations we may have about the city's internal control over financial reporting. We don't perform or apply enough audit procedures to be able to give an opinion on internal control. But based on the limited procedures we do perform, if we have any findings or recommendations, they'd be in that letter. We indicate in our letter that we did not identify any material weaknesses. So nothing of major concern in the city's internal control of our financial reporting. But we do have two significant deficiencies identified. One is a continuing recommendation, so we've talked about this one in the past, and it's related to the preparation of the financial statements. We do deem this to be a significant deficiency in the city's internal control of our financial reporting since we come in and prepare the financial statements, which have indicated is a common process for us independent auditors. But we also propose a lot of those year-end accrual adjustments and those GAZB adjustments in order to get your financial statements presented in the manner that they are. So we really just kind of had to report that potential, you know, perceived kind of conflict of interest that we're proposing adjustments and preparing the financial statements that we have a pine on. So we're not recommending that the city take the necessary steps to actually prepare financial statements, but we just continue to recommend the more adjustments the city can propose and post prior to audit time, that would be ideal going forward. The current year recommendation is related to segregation of duties. We were required by our professional standards to take a closer look at journal entries during this year's audit. And so we just identified that manual journal entries, so ones that really relate to those adjustments that I previously mentioned that don't result from, you know, money coming in or money going out can be basically proposed and posted, reviewed, and approved by one individual. So we just kind of wanted to call out that segregation of duties issue if there's someone else that can be involved in the process to be reviewing and approving those entries before they're posted in the city's system. So because those two findings or recommendations are listed as significant deficiencies, since y'all had that single audit this year as well, those comments are in both reports, just a requirement under both of those standards. All right, I think I went through that fairly quickly. Do you guys have any specific questions or comments about the summary report? Or any questions about the audit process, anything I can answer for the council this evening?
Does council have any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our second item tonight is City Clerk's Office is requesting authorization from the city council to destroy certain original records that meet the required retention schedule and compliance with R S M O one oh nine point two thirty dash four and Secretary of State guidelines. The records include outdated budget preparation record for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and eighteen through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. Certificates of insurance, two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and eighteen, manuals, public notices, general correspondences, various accepted and rejected bids, public information requests, fixed asset inventories, and outdated operating permits. The City Clerk has certified that these documents are no longer needed for current business and have no remaining administrative, legal, historical, or fiscal value. Upon approval, all documents will be shredded.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the records destruction request for the City Clerk's Office?
Motion to approve records disposal.
I have a motion in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding that motion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Chairwoman Bogus. Next, we have Public Works. Chairwoman Franklin, you have the floor.
First up tonight, we have Operations Director Justin Bray previously presented the sanitation container rental fees to city council during both sanitation rate adjustment presentations. However, these rates were not included in the overall rate adjustment ordinance. To finalize the process, these fee changes must now be formalized through adoption of this ordinance, ensuring cost, fuel, equipment, disposal are adequately recovered, and the rates align to industry standards. Adoption of this ordinance will formally establish the updated fees with changes effective October first, like the remainder of our fee adjustments.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-one.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-one. An ordinance submitting the fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances of the Cities Today in Missouri relating to sanitation container rental fees.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-one. An ordinance submitting the fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances of the Cities Today in Missouri relating to sanitation container rental fees.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-one. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
All in favor?
Next, the Public Works Council Committee reviewed and voted to recommend council approval of an ordinance creating a Sedalia sewer root removal reimbursement program. While the city has maintained a root control program since two thousand and twelve, natural occurrences of root intrusion into city-maintained portion of sewer mains can still occur and result in costly cleanup expenses for homeowners. The proposed program provides an incentive of up to five hundred reimbursement for eligible homeowners who proactively clean their, clean and clear the public portion of the sewer main, contingent on proper documentation and assigned release of liability. The council will designate funding for this program annually, and the city's liability will not exceed the budgeted amount.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-two.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-two. An ordinance creating the Sedalia sewer root removal reimbursement program.
Second. Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-two. Do I have any council discussion regarding it?
I have a couple of questions. What is considered proactive cleaning? What is that? Is that is if roots in your sewer and you call a company to come and clean them out? Or I don't understand this.
If there's a sewer backup and that backup occurs and backs up into the property, then they call out the plumber to go ahead and clear those roots. At that point, we would reimburse up to five hundred dollars the cost of removing those roots.
And this is on the section of sewer that is on the homeowner's property or on the city's end?
No, this is on the public section of the property. As far as on the private section, the private side of the line, that would be on the homeowner.
Okay. So, thank you.
Any other questions?
And who would they need to just contact? What office?
That form will be available in the clerk's office. And I believe that form is also located, a copy of that, in your guys' council packet. It has a checklist for all relevant documentation that's needed.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-two. An ordinance creating the Sedalia sewer root removal reimbursement program.
Oh, okay.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-two. Do I have any council discussion regarding that? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes.
In October, two thousand and twenty-four, council approved a three-year enterprise agreement with E S R I for G I S software and services to support multiple departments with interactive mapping and data solutions. The two-year subscription payment of twenty thousand, three hundred dollars is due for the term beginning October fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five per the pre-approved agreement. The amount originally budgeted did not fully reflect the contractual cost for year two of E S R I agreement. The budget amendment will align the budget with the previously approved contract. Approval of this amendment will ensure the city maintains uninterrupted access to E S R I's G I S solutions as authorized by council.
All right, very good. And as this is a budget amendment, we have a resolution and two ordinances in relation to it. So we'll call for the reading of Resolution twenty-one forty-two first.
Resolution twenty-one forty-two. A resolution to the City Council of the Cities Today in Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six.
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion to approve in a second for Resolution twenty-one forty-two. Do I have any council discussion regarding that resolution that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. We'll now call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-three.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-three. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six regarding public works as repayment.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of this bill. Do I have any council discussion regarding the bill? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-three. An ordinance submitting the budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six regarding public works as repayment.
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-three. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Hiller?
Yeah.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. We'll now call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-four.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-four. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for annual subscription to Arc G I S online program.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-four. Do I have any council discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-four. An ordinance approving and accepting a quote for annual subscription to Arc G I S online program.
Final passage?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the final passage of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-four. Do I have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, and thank you, Chairwoman Franklin. Next, we have Public Safety. Chairman Scribner, you have the floor.
Yeah, we have one item for consideration. After a presentation and review of the animal shelter fees at the previous council meeting, it is now time to consider the proposed ordinance updating associated adoption and violation fees. The updated just adoption fees for cats, kittens, dogs, and revises violation fees for running at large, biting, attacking, and vicious animal offenses. If approved, the amendment, the amended fee schedule will take effect October first, two thousand and twenty-five.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one fifty-five.
Bill number two thousand and twenty-five one fifty-five. An ordinance submitting the fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances of the Cities Today in Missouri relating to animal shelter fees.
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion, a second for the second reading of Bill number two thousand and twenty-five dash one dash one fifty five. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty five one fifty five, an ordinance submitting the fee schedule of the Code of Ordinances of the Cities Today in Missouri relating to animal shelter fees.
Final passage?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of Bill number twenty twenty five dash one fifty five. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes, and thank you, Chairman Scribner. Up next, we have Community Development. Chairwoman Foster, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have one item this evening. Um, during the review of the recently adopted permit fee ordinance, staff identified language that could cause confusion in applying mechanical permit fees. As written, the schedule references "commercial mechanical permits," which unintentionally suggests the fee applied only to commercial projects. To maintain simplicity and ensure proper application to all mechanical permits, staff recommends removing the word "commercial," so the schedule reads "mechanical permits, base fee up to $1,000." This correction is intended solely to clarify language and reduce confusion.
All right, call for the reading of Bill number twenty twenty five dash one fifty six.
Bill number twenty twenty five one fifty six, an ordinance submitting the fee schedule language of the Code of Ordinances of the Cities Today in Missouri by removing reference to "commercial" for "mechanical permits."
Second reading?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the second reading of Bill number twenty twenty five dash one fifty six. Do you have any council discussion regarding that bill that's on the floor? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes.
Bill number twenty twenty five one fifty six, an ordinance submitting the fee schedule language of the Code of Ordinances of the Cities Today in Missouri by removing reference to "commercial" for "mechanical permits."
Final passage?
Second.
I have a motion in second for the final passage of Bill number twenty twenty five dash one fifty six. Do you have any council discussion regarding it? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Franklin?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Yes.
Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor?
Motion passes. Uh, another business, we have a few liquor licenses. Call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have two new licenses and one renewal tonight. We have a special event license for paid share doing business as a local tap at 700 South Ohio for wings per waggs on September 13, 2025, downtown Ohio, downtown from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Another special event license for paid share doing business as a local tap at 700 South Ohio for Jaeger Cycle Bike Night on September 5, 2025, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. And then a renewal license, Crystal Sims doing business as Woods Express 570 at 703 East Broadway for packaged liquor and Sunday sales.
Motion to approve and block?
Second.
I have a motion to approve and block in a second. Do you have any council discussion regarding those licenses? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Uh, now, we have any miscellaneous items from the City Council or City Administrator? Anyone have anything?
I have one, please. I, I just want to say how excited I am that the varsity football team won the Silver Tiger back again this year. We kicked Warrensburg's Heine for the first time in seven years, I believe, so it's pretty exciting. I know, uh, go Tigers, so we are pretty stoked about that. So, I know some of you in here, I went to high school with, and you guys remember how that was a fierce battle back in the day. Well, we got it back.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman Foster. Councilman Hiller?
Yeah, I just want to say, uh, Open Door is gonna have a fundraiser Saturday, the sixth, at the MEC building on the fairgrounds. They're gonna have silent auction, uh, live auction, and I believe they're gonna have dinner, too. Starts at 5:00 maybe, oh? Maybe 6:00, but anyway, anyway, it'd be at the fairgrounds. They got some neat stuff. Uh, I made them a Christmas tree and a, um, a couple frogs, and everything I made them was out of horseshoes, so, uh, anyway, might go out there and support the Open Door. They do a lot for, for this community, uh, not only at their store, but at the, at the food center, so, kind of important that we support them a little bit.
What date was that?
It's Saturday, this Saturday.
Thank you, Councilman Hiller.
Starts at 5:00.
Anyone else? Okay, having no more, we've now arrived at the goodwill for a portion of our meeting. This is a time we've set aside for residents of Sedalia to address their city council directly. As a reminder, anyone wishing to speak must have signed up in advance using the form located in the lobby prior to the start of the meeting. That form requires your name, address, and telephone number and agenda item you wish to address. Comments must be related to items on tonight's agenda unless a formal written request to speak on non-agenda topic was submitted at least two business days in advance. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their remarks. Please clearly state your name and address for the record when you come to the microphone. This is not a time for debate or dialogue with council members. The council is, the council chambers is a limited public forum, and all marks must be directed to the councils as a whole. I would remind everyone that personal attacks on specific city employees by name, title, are not permitted. If you wish to file a formal complaint, you may do so in writing at the clerk's office. Disruptive behavior such as shouting, refusing to yield the floor, or blocking the views of others will not be tolerated, and violators may be asked to leave or removed by law enforcement if necessary. Your comments tonight will be recorded as part of the official public record. We thank you for your cooperation in maintaining decorum. At this time, we'll begin calling forward those who have signed up to speak, and, uh, Clerk Myers, if you could go ahead and start calling them up.
Yeah, I, I don't have anybody for agenda items tonight, mayor, but I do have four for non-agenda topics.
Very good.
Um, the first one I have is Randy Temple Meyer, and he is wanting to speak on, uh, maintaining of stormwater ditches near Crown Hill Cemetery.
Very good. Uh, Randy Temple Meyer, if you're here, come on up. All right, please speak into the microphone, state your name and address, and you'll be allotted three minutes. Thank you.
So, my name's Randy Temple Meyer. I own a house at 519 North New York that my mother moved into in 1986, so I'm not new to the property. Uh, I took over ownership with my ex in 2012, and then when we split up, I bought the house from her. Um, as long as I can remember, uh, the drainage in that neighborhood has been an issue because there's no concrete curbs in a lot of the areas. It just runs off the side of the road, and then we get erosion that makes the ditches unsafe. In 2023, I was mowing the ditch, uh, with a weed eater because that's the only way to get it done, and because of the erosion and the tall grass that's grows out of the ditch, I was unable to see that there was a shelf carved underneath the edge of the ditch. I fell, and I tore ligaments in my ankle. I, um, had to have surgery. I was out of work for two months. It put me in a financial bind at the time. Um, the reason I'm up here tonight is because for the past few years, I continually get letters saying that I need to mow the city ditch and maintain it. Several of my neighbors as well, and the photos, uh, have the same issues that I do. Um, I'm not asking for a major rework in the neighborhood as far as like coming in, laying culverts or building curbs and all that, but I'd ask the city council to take a look at the photos and see if we can't come up with a solution for it. Um, I know that we own a mower with an arm on it that runs off a New Holland tractor, but that takes time and money. I understand that. Um, I have talked to Ms. Tina, uh, and we discussed maybe seeing if we can't recycle some of the sidewalks we replace and break them up and put them in there as to where we can, um, control the weeds and everything in the ditches with spray. Uh, I'm not a big fan of doing that currently with them just being bare mud because in some of those photos, you'll see that, uh, my neighbor has done that, um, that property's owned by a rental agency in town, and they sprayed it. They've been spraying it for years. The road that's over there is maybe six years old, and it's giving out. It's eroding into the ditch, filling culver with mud, decreasing its flow capacity, causing the road to flood in heavy rains. Um, and even Crown Hill Cemetery has a few spots along their ditch roadway. You know, guys get paid all day, every day to mow grass, and they consider it unsafe to run their mowers through as well. So, I'd just like to ask if we can look at that area and maybe come up with something for the stormwater, make it safe for the residents, maintain the property, because in those photos, the ditches are overgrown, the yards are not. The residents are not opposed to maintaining the ditches, but it needs to be done in a safe manner.
No.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Temple Meyer. All right, up next?
Uh, the second one I have is Debbie Covington.
Debbie Covington here? I do not believe she is here.
Uh, the next one I have is Derek Stanley. He wants to talk about solid waste management and, uh, MDNR FOIA request results.
All right, come on up, Mr. Stanley. You have, uh, please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Stanley, uh, Buckley Road. Um, again, my name is Derek Stanley. I'm here representing Presidio Environmental. We are the people putting in the environmental management park in the western part of the county, uh, about seven miles outside of Sedalia. Uh, we are also responsible for the recent flyers, um, that, uh, many residents received, uh, discussing the new landfill plans of Canadian-based GFL on, on, uh, on, uh, site that borders the city of Sedalia. In follow-up to my last visit with, uh, to this council, I provided the city with the notes which we obtained from the Missouri Department of Natural Resources through the Freedom of Information Act request. These notes clearly show the Canadian-based GFL did in fact meet with MDNR and laid out a detailed plan to put in two new landfills, one in the floodplain of Muddy Creek and the other on attractive ground that borders the city of Sedalia on three sides. The MDNR notes make reference to GFL sharing with MDNR Pettis County's plan to create a new order and that will grandfather GFL, uh, to proceed with their new landfill plans. My understanding is that neither the County Commission nor GFL has discussed the matter with anyone at the city of Sedalia. We have submitted repeated FOIA requests to Pettis County Commission, but thus far, they continue to evade our requests. The public should demand answers from the county commissioners. I encourage the city of Sedalia to also make a formal request for information from the commission. Finally, there is the matter of the county trash tax, which under RSMO 260.830 of Missouri law is supposed to go to the Economic Development Board, but has been hijacked by the county commissioners. Not only should these funds go directly to the Economic Development Board, but they should repay any funds in which they have spent.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Stanley.
Thank you.
And the last person I have is, uh, Renee Vance, uh, who wants to talk about, uh, senior center funding.
All right, Ms. Vance, coming up. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Renee Vance, 19813, Taylor, New York. I've been a proud advocate for the Sedalia Senior Center to this council for the last five years. Keeping the city informed on the fundraisers, dinners, sales for potatoes, and mystery boxes, auctions, and galas are a wonderful social events for what I believe is a very noble and underfunded cause. Tonight, I come to you with some very concerning financial news. As of October 17th, Care Connection has decided to close the Windsor Senior Center. It was due to funding as well as some continued issues with finding the right people, as a lot of 501s seem to have, and illnesses. It is concerning because we're the largest center for Care Connection, and due to the fact that the Older American Act has still not been funded, um, that is how we receive a lot of our administrative money, and that's not there. We have two cooks with benefits. We have a HDM coordinator with benefits, and we have a director who is also doubling as an occasional cook with benefits. Four people. We've got 684 county clients, all seniors. Uh, we serve over 150 hot meals to homebound seniors. There's a lot going on. Other than meals, we do par rides. We are trying to keep our senior population in the home as best as we can because Medicare is cutting back, SNAP is cutting back, and there is, out of the SNAP that is received in Missouri, there's 23% of them that are seniors that receive SNAP, so those benefits are coming back. As of this date, to put everything in perspective, Pettis County's got 43,791 people as of last year. 24.67 of those 43,000 people are 60 and older. That's a lot of our clients. As of this date, there's been no extra money for the Older Americans Act. That can, we are looking for additional funding or sponsors, obviously. We have got a big month coming up with fundraisers because we're trying to make some money. We've got the Spud sale that is going to be on the 15th, and that's something that we always deliver five or more. I've got order blanks if you'd like them on the...
Mrs. Vance, your time has expired. My apologies. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and entertain a motion to move to closed session.
Go move.
You have a second? I have a motion in second. Any council discussion regarding that motion? Having heard none, roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames? Scribner?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Okay, we good to go, Chris?
Yes.
Here you go. All right. Do you have a motion in second to return to the regular meeting?
Second.
Have a motion in second. Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Ames?
Here.
Scribner?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Hiller?
Here.
Cross?
Here.
Foster?